Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. So, just in the way of comments, I wanted to note that we are going to be doing another board workshop on December 17th, which is our next board meeting. It'll probably be conducted in a similar fashion to the way we did our first and only board, or workshop at this point. So we'll do a brief, regular meeting and then go into the workshop. We're going to focus, in this workshop, we're going to focus on mental health issues, mental health concerns, and we'll work over the next couple of weeks to narrow that topic down and get information out to you and out to the public so that everyone who would like an opportunity to participate in that workshop does have that opportunity. The meeting will be here at the middle school. And I also just want to make sure everyone notes that the minutes and report of, from the breakout groups of the last workshop is posted on our website, on the RSU website. Okay, just a couple of other things, quick things. In our, in the packet, you got the reports from the administrators, and I just want to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to look at Justin particularly. All the reports are great. Thank you to the principals and administrators who put those reports together. But just take an extra look at Justin's report on special education, where he provides numbers and identifies the, our special needs population by handicapping condition. Couple of numbers just jump out at you. About, almost 20% of the current school population receives some special education service, but that's about on par with where we were last year. But it's an impressive number, for sure. The other report, I just want to point out, is Lindsay's report on communications. I am really impressed with the amount of material that we seem to get out in the print media, and I think that, you know, thanks to you, Patrick, for identifying that opportunity. I think we certainly are getting our $15,000 out of Lindsay up to this point. It's been a good investment for us, I think anyways, and hopefully it just gets good news on the district out to the community. Okay? Sure. Yep, Jen.
Since you brought it up, I really did like the communications report too. It was wonderful to kind of see the things that are being worked on. But I'd like to, I think the district-wide newsletter isn't the same thing as the school newsletters that are sent out. I think that's a different topic, and I was just wondering if we have the principals in here, if we could please ask them, when they do their newsletters on the Friday before our school board meetings, if they could just include a note that there will be an upcoming school board meeting. I think it would really help remind the public that, they get that newsletter on a Friday, that, you know, Monday night is the meeting. It might help them plan for childcare or something like that, and it would, I think, just help having more people involved in our meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jen. Okay. Item 4.0, we have minutes for the October 28th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay. We have a motion by Bill, second by Lou. Take a look at the minutes. Any corrections, changes to those minutes? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes? Any opposed? Okay, thanks. Item 5.0, adjustment to agenda. Patrick, you have nothing? I have nothing. Okay. Item 6.0, this is our first public session, our first public comment period, and it is to be used for comments that folks may have to address items that are on the agenda. Does anyone have a comment? If not, thanks. Okay. Item 7.0, staff reports. We have a presentation on our unified sports program, and I think we've been doing this for what, three years now, I think? Patrick?
So we just received some recognition, being, that's the reason for the presentation tonight, but really to be recognized as a Special Olympics Unified Champions District in high school. And just to give you a little bit of history, we have the basketball team, and this year we just started the volleyball team. And so I'm going to let Becky Roach and Charlie Bingham and a few of our students speak to their efforts, and thank you for coming tonight.
So essentially, our champion school, what that means is that there are different steps to becoming a champion school. There's emerging, developing, and then full implementation, and as of this year, we were granted the full implementation of the Unified Schools being a champion school. And there are 56 across the state that are champion schools. There are 106 schools across the state that are actually working towards this, so we are one of the 56, 53 rather, that are full implementation. And what that means is that we have unified sports teams. We have volleyball and basketball. It means we have youth leadership, and for us, that is our phys ed class, and then whole school engagement. And it's just some programs that we have been doing at the high school to engage the entire population with the help of inclusion. So we're just going to go through some of these slides. This year was the first year for our Unified Volleyball. It was very successful. The only downside was that there were only three teams that actually, or three schools, rather, that had teams. So it was us, Oxford Hills, and Lisbon. Lisbon couldn't get their act together as far as having enough athletes, and so we didn't end up getting a game with them, but we were able to get a doubleheader with Oxford Hills. We traveled over to their place first, and then they came to us. I'm not sure if the highlight was the actual game or the pizza party and social afterwards, but they had a great time going over to Oxford Hills, and then we hosted them here as well. We, also to wrap up our season, we had a game with the faculty and staff, just kind of an extra opportunity to get us to play another game, as well as that camaraderie in the building and making it aware of what we actually are all about to the faculty and staff, so that was a lot of fun as well. As you guys know, we've done basketball for the last two years. This will be our third season with basketball, and that, again, is just a huge community builder, not only within our school, but also in the community. We've had an opportunity to do some community outreach. We played the Bath PD for a fundraiser game, and that was a lot of fun. Everyone had, you know, smiles on their faces for that. We also were able to, during our winter carnival, we played the faculty there as well. So we had about, I don't know, how many would you say?
300 kids.
300 kids and faculty, all in the pit, which is, as you guys know, is a great arena for something like that. They're all there cheering us on, and got to watch the faculty and the teachers actually play against us. So that was a, that was a big hit during winter carnival, and we plan to continue, continue with that. Like I said, the second criteria for us to be full implementation is our youth leadership, and I'm going to have Charlie speak to this a little bit. We have a couple students here from the phys ed class, the Unified Phys Ed class, and that's, right now, that's where our youth leadership comes from, so I'm going to have them speak to that.
Ms. Roach also didn't tell you, she won the first Unified Volleyball game in the state of Maine history, and they were 2-0 this year, so congratulations to her and the team. One thing, and we actually, we presented for the Special Olympics, Ian Frank, who's the head of the Special Olympics in the state of Maine, asked me to present to the, to, about Unified Phys Ed for the state of Maine Phys Ed Teachers Conference, and we are the only school, high school in the state of Maine that teaches a Unified Phys Ed program. So thank you to administration for letting us do that and letting us start this. So we had to present in front of all the phys ed teachers in the state, and I actually got an email last week from Brunswick, their department head asking to come and observe our class and to get our notes for the class and see how things are run, so, and that's the third person that's come and observed the Unified class in the last three years, so it's been really great. One of the things we do is, again, what's great about the class, it's split 50-50, we have half special needs students and half regular education students, and they kind of partner up with each other. And we give them a list of activi, they get to choose some of the activities that they want to do, and with a grant from the Davenport Foundation a few years ago, so we got to go kayaking on the New Meadows River with the help of Sea Spray Kayaking. And then, one of the kids wanted to go fishing, and so we went fishing down in Aquosset, and we actually had Mr. Coolus come down and give a demonstration of how to go do fishing and all this stuff, and our kids did all this. One thing that was great about this, it's not just for the students, it's for the helpers as well, because some of our helpers, they had never been fishing either. One thing that was really interesting about that is, Mr. Pinkerton, our old principal, goes, "You need a fishing license." Ooh, I forgot about that. So we had to apply for a one-day pass for everyone in the class to get the fishing license, and it was really cool. They came down, gave out stickers to everybody, was really great and a lot of fun, and we had two kids that have gone fishing now since then. The next one we did for a field trip is we went horseback riding, which was pretty amazing. This place down in southern Maine, they have special harnesses and ramps to get people in wheelchairs up onto the horses and things like that. It was a tremendous program, and five of our other students had never been on a horse either. So, again, in phys ed, we put kids in places a lot of times where they're not comfortable. So both them and their peers were uncomfortable together, so they were going through this together, going through some of the same anxiety, and that's really what this class is about, is doing this, these things together. And it's been a lot of fun, and...
I didn't know if any of you want to speak to, these are three of our students that are in our phys ed class, and I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk a little bit about this.
So my name's Alex Massio, and I joined this class at the beginning of sophomore year. Bing reached out to me and asked if I wanted to be a part of this, and I thought it would be like a good opportunity, you know, to go in there and like learn some skills, as well as like help kids out, and also try some stuff about, like stuff that I really haven't done before. And we went to a unified meeting up in Portland, and I actually had a lot of fun talking to everybody and meeting new people, and overall, this has just been like really fun.
Hi, I'm Delaney Pascozo, and I'm part of the Unified PE and Unified Volleyball, which is fun. But Unified is like a good chance to help people out, and, I don't know, it feels good knowing like you're making a difference and, I don't know.
My name's Ben. I live in Woolwich, and I think it's a good program because it gives the students that aren't like really able to do stuff that we can, a chance to do it, and like, yeah.
One thing that's really interesting, and it didn't show there, we had one young lady in a wheelchair, and she goes, "I wanted to show everybody how it feels to be in a wheelchair." So we put a thing on Facebook, and we brought wheelchairs in, and we played basketball, and everyone had a wheelchair, and everybody was excited. At the end of class, she goes, "Mr. Bingham, that didn't go the way I thought. I thought people would be upset they had to go in the wheelchairs, but they really enjoyed it." And we actually, I actually got in trouble because I was racing one of the young ladies down the hall one day in the wheelchair. But I think we all have these perceptions of what people think, and these, when you go through the class and when you see these kids and experience the things they have, you get a whole new light on what's going on in the lives of our students. And I'll say this again, this program, what we've done, what our school has done, has changed my life, and I know it's changed the lives of a lot of other kids too. So thank you for letting us do that, and hopefully we can continue it.
Yeah, so not to take up too much more time, but the last section or last criteria is the whole school engagement. And so last year, with the Civil Rights Group as well as Shipbuilders Committed, we were able to put on the Spread the Word to End the Word campaign. And so Abby Schreeden, along with the Civil Rights Club, put this great video together. It's only a couple-minute video about spreading inclusion, so I just wanted to show you guys that real quick. Oh, no volume. Oh, no. So I'll, as we're waiting for that to work, I'll move on a little bit. I think it was Alex that was talking about the youth summit that we were able to go to. We took about 30 kids down to this youth summit down at Sable Oaks. It was a Special Olympics inclusion revolution, and our students were able to, you know, get to know, I think there's over 350 other Maine students that were there at this summit, and they talked about different opportunities that they were involved in, these different schools, as well as opportunities that we can now take back to Morse High School and implement into the things that we do. And so part of that whole school engagement is we're going to put a youth council together, driven by the students and their ideas and excitement that they brought from that youth summit, and bring them back to Morse. So that's kind of exciting as well. And here's the video.
Spread the word to end the word.
It is not acceptable to use the R-word and call me or anyone a retard.
That's so crazy.
Buy a dictionary.
Buy a dictionary.
He's my teammate.
I pledge to spread inclusion by looking out for the bullied.
I pledge to spread inclusion by looking after each other and looking after the bully.
Choose to include.
Spread the word to end the word.
Spread the word to end the word.
Okay, so that, that video was done, but again, I think I said Abby Schreeden. She did a great job on that. So from this youth summit, they have been able to be exposed to some of these different activities, such as this, that we can bring it back to the high school. So we're really looking forward to putting that youth leadership council together. Another whole school engagement, we were fortunate enough to host the Special Olympics Track Meet last spring, where we had, again, we had a ton of involvement from the Morse students, as well as we had the Bath PD there handing out the ribbons for that day, which was really special for the kiddos that were getting the ribbons. So this is a picture from when we were down at that youth summit. When we were down there, the kids also had an opportunity to present their phys ed class, and they did a circuit. So they did some circuit training, and the kids were able to go around to the different circuits and teach them how to perform the exercise, and then they did a whole big dance as well, which was a lot of fun. It was just, it was a great day for the kids to be leaders and to kind of stand out above the rest of the kids that were there, and they did a great job, and they rose to the occasion. All right, action plan moving forward. Like I talked about, we want to develop this youth leadership council and run some other campaigns, like our Choose to Include campaign. We also want to run an anti-bullying campaign, as well as a youth athletics program, which our kids from the high school would go down to the elementary schools. And so maybe we'd go over to Woolwich and put on a little clinic for the students down over at Woolwich. And then for Unified Sports, we'd like to expand that a little bit as well. We want to put an alumni game together. We have a lot of current alum that will be back over the holidays in January when we start up with Unified Basketball, and we'd like to bring them back in and do a little fundraiser game with them. The MPA is also offering bocce this spring, so it's going to be NPA sanctioned sport, so that's really exciting for the MPA. They're also trying to get swim and track underway, because right now, what happens with swim and track, they have this one Special Olympics event that they go to, and so they want to build more opportunities for the athletes to be involved in an actual league, where they get more opportunities to compete versus just that one big Special Olympics event or activity.
One thing on that too is, one thing, these kids that are now used to playing Unified Basketball and Unified Sports, we're trying to get them when they graduate, because there's nothing really for them to do once they get out of here. And so that's one of the things that the state is struggling with and the Special Olympics is struggling with. Like why isn't there a program at the YMCA or anything like that for adults with disabilities? And so we're trying to, trying to gather some information, maybe work with Elmhurst and things like that, to get some of those kids back in, and so we can have programming for them as well.
All right, any questions? Comments?
Any question? I mean, this is, your enthusiasm for this, I mean, really is incredible, and you're to be congrat, I think the first time you presented, which might have been a year ago, I would probably said the same thing, but you've, you've taken this program, you've expanded it. It is just fabulous. The participation by, by our regular instruction kids, as well as the special needs kids who are in the program is just, is really, I mean, for me, it's what education is all about, so. I do, I have one specific question. Before you did the Unified model, that, Charlie, you talked about that, what, how did you conduct your phys ed?
So it used to be, years ago, when I first took the job as a phys ed teacher, we did a whole pullout, and it was just those kids. And because of the way things have gone, we did, those kids didn't need phys ed every year, so it was a smaller group, so there might be three or four kids in a class, and you needed a specialized certification for that. So when we went to Unified, we don't need that certification anymore, and so I can do it, and I think it brings out great leadership qualities in the other schools, and really has transformed our department, and I think the state with doing that now.
Yeah.
So it's been really great.
No, that's, that's great.
And I know you guys are worried about education, all that stuff, but I think that picture right there is really important to me, because we talk about our content and how great it is, it's really about the relationships. Those two guys graduated together last year, and without what we have done, they would have never met. And today, that's, that's the beauty of what we do, it's the relationships, and those two will never forget that. So when we, when we talk about education, it's the whole person, and I think sometimes we lose sight of that when we talk about math and...
Yeah, that's what I meant. I mean, we focus on the academic side of it, but there's this whole other relationship, interrelational aspect of it, and the human, it's about humanity, really. How do, how do we teach, teach our kids to, to move on to the next step in society generally? And it involves these kinds of relationships and skills that they develop through this program, so. Any, any questions from the board on this? Want to comment? This is great, now we know when the question comes up on Jeopardy, you know, who, what phys ed instructor in the state of Maine won the first Unified Volleyball championship, we know, we'll know what the answer is, so, congratulations. So congratulations to you, to the kids you brought here tonight, to present, to everyone who participates in this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, item 8.0, committee reports. Patrick, building project.
Yeah, the new high school, as you drive by, you can see a lot of yellow, you can see a little bit of gray now as well in the front. The brickwork will continue, it's on, happening on the east and the south side right now, but throughout the whole winter, there will be tenting and heating of that building so that the masonry can continue. The front lobby stairs and the theater stairs are now installed, and some interior walls are starting to go up in the school. A lot of the underslab mechanical systems are being put in place, and underground electrical and IT conduit is putting, put in place. And finally, last Friday, we had some weather that allowed us to crook it to pave, so if you go up there close to the building now, there is paved all around the back entrance of the school as well, and that's just a base layer. They'll come back, obviously, right before we open the building and put another layer of pavement down. And the geothermal well is 100% complete, which will, again, allow air conditioning in the whole school, as well as heating of the school. So everything is going as planned, it's on budget, it's on schedule, and the next big step for us is to have a committee of staff and students that will be put together soon to help pick out the furniture, desks, chairs, and all kinds of other things that goes into the school.
Thanks. Any, any questions of Patrick on the building? We're pretty much on schedule still. Okay. That's an affirmative from Patrick. I noticed you're putting, they started to put the supports in for the bridge entering, which, which is great. 8.2, curriculum assessment instruction update. Katie?
Good evening, everyone. So just one quick thing, Brandon just let me know that at 6:30, there's going to be an overhead announcement because of conferences, and he apologizes for that, because we will hear it. So I'm, I'm very excited. I have two people here from our library department across RSU1 to talk about some of the great things that are happening in the program, and they've actually put together, I just heard, I didn't know this was happening, something for you to watch as well, which should be really interesting. So Dawn Lee, our Morse librarian, and Abby Lukies, our Woolwich librarian, will be coming up, and I'm looking in the audience, I also see Mike Barker here, who's not presenting, but one of our librarians, and so, am I missing anybody else? No, I think that's it. So I'm going to turn it over to all of you. Thank you for putting this together, we're really excited.
I'm going to stall a few minutes though, because I don't want to start it and then have the announcements go through it. I'm Abby Lukies, I'm the Woolwich librarian, and this is Dawn from Morse. Thank you so much for letting us come and share with you some of what we do. Dawn reminded me that the last time we did this was 2009, so it's nice to be back. We figure between the two of us, we can talk about the library experiences and programming for our youngest students in pre-k all the way up to our graduating seniors.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to thank all of the students and parents for coming out this evening. Teachers, as you finish up your conversations, please remember to turn off the lights and lock the door. I hope everyone has a good day.
Dawn and I are both really passionate about libraries, but like Katie mentioned, we have a video that can more invite you more into our, our schools and share with you what is happening at least at Morse and Woolwich with our students and their libraries.
Hi, I'm John Dever. I'm in the Social Studies Department here at Morse. And being a new teacher here at Morse this year, I was very interested to see what the library could provide. I know that a good library is really important to the health of the school community. And so I was really pleased in, in discovering that this is a fantastic place, a great resource for, for staff and for students. And I've also, every time I've come down here, this is a very lively place, a very welcoming place. I see kids here learning, socializing appropriately, enjoying each other's company and enjoying being part of the Morse community. And so I'm really pleased to see that this is not the kind of library that sees itself as sort of the guardians of the holy artifacts, but really more as a, as a living place and an active community and evolving to meet the needs of everyone.
My school library has a lot of books here and I love, I'm going to try and read every single one by the time I'm in eighth grade.
The library has always provided me with a safe space to come and be myself. It's really given me a way to improve myself, not only as a student, but as a person. I always find myself wrapped up in those fascinating intellectual conversations with the librarians. It's one of the most amazing places I can ever think of.
My school library goes far beyond a 40-minute class for our, our students. Our librarian provides opportunities outside of library class like Battle of the Books and author visits. We just participate in Global Read Aloud and all of that comes from a collaboration with the librarian. Also, we collaborate on curriculum, integrating research skills, how to find resources, and responsible digital behaviors.
I'm grateful for my library because they helped me with capstone and research. My school library is a place where I can come and feel comfortable, where my students can come and find books that they are interested in reading, where my librarian can get together with me and a group of students and have book talks and book groups after school, where kids can play games, where they can feel welcome and safe.
One of the things that I appreciate is the fruit bowls that they provide on Produce Tuesdays. It's fun to be able to go down and get a bowl of fruit, bring it back, have it in my room for the kids to enjoy. So thank you Dawn and Brenda for making that happen. It seems like a little thing, but it really is a big thing. The library provides a home for our kids and that is so obvious and the relationships they build are strong. So thank you again for making that happen.
My school library is extraordinary.
The library is a great place to study.
And hang out with friends.
My school library is key with my instructional practice. One, collaboration. We do a lot of collaborating together, research skills, the big six turn into the small three to adapt for fifth grade. Tech integration is another key piece. We're actually planning for podcasts in preparation for our argument and working together is way more beneficial for students, so I'm super appreciative.
One of the most important skills that we can teach our students today is how to be critical consumers of information, from news articles to information that they're using for research projects to find out the truth and the evidence behind arguments in order to support them. I find the library to be one of the most invaluable places to help teach kids those skills and to help me as a teacher.
My school library is awesome.
Questions? Any, any questions? Yes, we have a librarian among us.
I liked your video a lot. Thank you very much. And like you said, I saw a lot of Woolwich and Morse there. So I was just wondering if you, the librarians, feel like there's anything you might need or the libraries need to meet the students, all of the students in RSU One?
The school library is actually the biggest classroom in the building and when you think about that, that's pretty awesome. We have the potential to see every staff member and every student. But all of our schools need to have a certified school library media specialist to deliver those services. A school library media specialist is not the keeper of the principles John referred to, but we're basically collaborators. We're teachers first and we collaborate, we form partnerships with teachers to provide research skills, to provide critical thinking skills, 21st century information literacy skills. And we're also tech gurus. And when you combine that together, it's a pretty awesome place. There's 55 years of data and study that show that if there's a school library media specialist in a building, that increases student achievement. And that I find to be compelling. We're linked to higher graduation rates. We're linked to mastery of academic standards across all content areas, whether it's math or reading or science. And as Charlie mentioned earlier, that's all good, but we also form this wonderful safe place for kids. At Morse High School, since 2008, we have run a full-fledged food pantry that has grown by leaps and bounds. We also provide a whole host of services that help bring the social aspect to kids. We're a safe space where a lot of students harbor when they don't feel safe. And I think that does paramount to any school library. So, but we need to have certified personnel in all of our buildings to be able to provide those services. Right now, we do a great job, but we could do a better job because there are some schools that don't have a certified school library media specialist and that's sad because they're not receiving the same services that they do at Woolwich or at BMS or at Morse because there's not the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just that kind of, you know, segues into a question. What, what is your, what support does Patent Free Library provide or can it provide to enhance the services that you provide in the schools? I mean, do you have, you have a relationship there or?
We, we do. Actually, we do a lot of programming. Brenda, who's the library assistant at Morse High School, we helped out with their haunted house, talking about building our relationships. But we, we find that actually at our high school, we, we have more resources for our teenagers than Patent Free does, so therefore that's where students go. We try to do a lot of after-school programming and enhance that as enrichment, but as far as resources go, it's a veteran house because our kids are right there.
In terms of the collaborative relationship at Woolwich, obviously the school's closed for the summer and so I always have the teen librarian come over, introduce herself to the students so they know who their summer librarian will be and encourage students to use Patent Free over the summer break or other, other breaks. And now there is a new, there's a new children's librarian, Katie. So she's also been great and reached out and just sharing, always sharing the programming that they're doing and encouraging our students to utilize that as another resource.
Thanks, thanks. I think one thing we've, from, from the discussion, because I also serve on the Patent Free Library Board, just the concern with the, with the new high school being that much further away from, you know, from Patent Free, whether or not we can continue to build some of those afternoon programs that, that, you know, the library has by, with, you know, supporting it with transportation if possible, things like that.
And those relationships are very important.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, 9.0, Tanner, you're it, student representative.
November is usually the first month of the year where students are fully in their, the swing of things, for lack of a better term, where you settle down in the school and you're starting to get the hang of it. So freshmen, sophomores, and juniors had PSATs this month, which went well. The 90th Moheba was a success. We had two female students in the senior class commit to D1 schools, Olivia Harper for swimming at the University of Tennessee and Dory Coolis for softball at Merrimack College, which is obviously a huge point of pride for the Morse community. We had parent-teacher conferences tonight, which will continue tomorrow. And I know guidance has gone around and met with most juniors, I believe, in their English class to talk about next steps, whether that be the SAT, ACT, or college search. As far as I'm concerned, everything is going very well.
Great, great. Thanks very much, Tanner. 10.0, Patrick, superintendent's report.
Tanner's new. I think I'm going to have to check in with him because he, he took about two or three of my items, so we'll check next time. So I only have a couple of things. It's, it's just nice to see this time of year, our students taking the initiative to give back to other families and to the community at a time when some, for some families and community members, you know, food is tough to come by and, and other resources. So the food drives that we have as well as inviting the community members into our schools is, is nice to see. And then the only other piece I'll touch on is just that all of our schools are collaborating closely with, you know, fire departments and police departments just to update our crisis plans and evacuation plans. And Bath PD as well as the Sheriff's Department are always very willing to give us advice and to consult with, which we very much appreciate. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions of Patrick?
I just wanted to, could you, I just wanted to recognize the Student Maker Fair as well. I was hoping you'd mention it. We had a really great Student Maker Fair at Deitnoll School a week or so ago and it was just a great experience. So I wanted to make sure that the PTA group got recognized for that and all the students that participated. It was really awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Anita. I attended, I bought raffle tickets. I'm not sure you've done the raffle draw yet, but not yet. Oh, geez. Better luck next year. Okay. All right. 10.2, Dever, financial report.
Tonight, we're talking about the month of October and we have spent $8.9 million out of our $33 million budget. This is 26%. It's a little bit higher than last year. Last year was 22%. And it's only because there were three pay periods in the month of October, so it's the timing. We've received $11 million of our revenue and that is right online with what we've done in the past. It shows, this report shows amount remaining of $24 million and, and next month, you'll see a big switch between the encumbered and the amount remaining because I've encumbered the salary and benefits. So you'll see that on the November report. That's about $16 million for the rest of the year. This time of year, I take a look at our budget versus actual for our tuition revenue and we're down about three students from what was budgeted. So the revenue shows a little bit short until the tuition rates are set by the state and then hopefully, you know, we'll smooth that difference out. The audit is done. I have a draft copy and next month, I should be able to have copies to you from Hank. But I did want to point out for our food service that this is the first year in six years that we're showing a positive balance. Now that's due, of course, to the extra amount that we contributed for our local share, but that's a good, that's a good thing to see. And finally, Morse High School, we have spent $27 million, which is about 36% of our budget and all is going well there.
Thank you. Thanks, Deb. Any questions of Deb? No, thank you very much, Deb. Okay, 11.0, old business. 11.1, review of 2019-20 board goals. Jen, do you want to lead us through that?
So I think that we continue to monitor the new construction project. I was happy to hear that Superintendent Patrick offered or suggested there be a committee soon to start talking about some more of the interior decisions. I invite everyone to try to be part of that, students and community members. It's nice to see that we're making progress on our communications efforts. I thought the board packet report was great from Lindsay and I hope to see more communication in the future in terms of, on all sorts of medias to help the public know the work we're doing here. I think that we're working on goal three in terms of our work on our mental health issues and how we're helping serve both students and teachers in the classroom. The one thing on that is I was wondering if I could request, do we have an update soon from the new position that we created, the social work position, in terms of just a kind of a feedback or an update at all about how that position has helped the student, student body in the schools that she's working in? It's something that might be interesting to read or get some input on. And I think that we're, you know, working our way through the goals and I think we're doing some great progress and we'll continue to report back on those.
Thanks, Jen. Any, any questions? Jen, no? Okay, 11.2, we have second reading of three board policies and they are now action items. We have policy, so 11.2A, policy DJH, purchasing and contracting procurement. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Jen, the second. Second by Megan. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay. 11.2B, policy IIB, class size. Do I have a motion to adopt this policy? We have a motion by Lou, second by Alan. All in favor? Any opposed? No. And 11, or 11.2C, IKE, promotion, retention, and acceleration of students. And that, that one is revised from comments that were made at the, at the meeting last month. So do I have a motion to approve? Any opposed? Any opposed? Well, okay, motion by Alan, second by Bill, any, any comments, any discussion? If not, all, all in favor of adopting that policy? Any opposed? No, okay, thank you. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take my prerogative here as, as chair under old business, I forgot to mention that we did have the inaugural meeting of the Waste Reduction Committee earlier this, no, it was Monday of last week, and we met, and, and it was primarily a organizational meeting, but we, we had both, we had representation from all the buildings, Tim and Dave Richards representing the administration, and students and teachers from, from each of the buildings, and we had a, had a good meeting, and I'm really, this, this was the proposal that was brought forward by Fisher Mitchell students for us to consider, and we, we had a good meeting, I think, I think the, our task is to bring back a, a Waste Reduction Plan for the board to consider by, by June, hopefully we'll get there. Everyone's committed, the kids were great in the meeting, and hopefully we'll move forward successfully, so. We'll, we'll announce those meetings as well on our calendar for anyone who wants to attend and, and participate from the community. Okay, twelve point O, new business, twelve point one, personnel items, twelve point one A, we have a resignation.
Yeah, just a FYI, is resignation of Wendy Connors, administrative assistant at Morse, and would like to thank her for eleven years of service, and her last day will be, I think, the third week in, in January, so we have that position advertised right now.
Thanks, Patrick. Twelve point two, we do have a, a request for out of, out of state, out of country travel. It is a field trip request for the Morse French class, and they're heading up to Quebec City. They say, they say they are, okay. Merci. We have a motion by Bill, second by Lou, all, all in favor? Any opposed? No, okay. All right, thirteen point O, this is our second public comment period, and this is an opportunity to address the board on, on other issues. The board, as, as is our practice, we, we take, we take comments under consideration for sure, it's not an opportunity for a detailed discussion, but we, we do take those, take public comments at this point, so, does anyone want to address the board? Yep, if you, if you'd come up, take the mic and just state your name.
My name's Kevin Bachman, I'm here to discuss the, I guess it's a policy you guys have on private school students' access to public school activities. My issue with the policy is that I feel that it's discriminatory against certain students, I think it's poorly implemented, I think the handling of the situation with my daughter is just an awful, it's an awful situation, the timing was bad, I wasn't given any information on the policy before. Basically, basically what happened was my daughter goes to DeMar Scott and Montessori School, and her mother and I have decided that's, that's the best fit for her, and, but, we live in Erastick, or Erastick, we lived in Bath, we've been here for twenty-plus years, paid taxes in the RSU One for twenty-plus years, so she's now in sixth grade, so we decided, well, you know, she, maybe she can play on the middle school teams. So I called the A.D. of Woolwich, because they're the closest to us, I called soccer coach, and she said, sure, yeah, as long as she gets all of her forms in. I said, great, so she went, tried out, played the entire season, all our criteria was completed, all of her forms are completed, with the A.D. and everything, there's no mention of any policy against other students playing. So after the season was over with, she went to go play basketball, she was like, well, I'll play basketball, I made a bunch of good friends at Woolwich, and everybody was playing basketball, and she said, well, I'll try out for basketball too, I said, sure, go for it. Again, no word about a policy, however, so she was all ready to, she'd been practicing and getting ready to play, and at two o'clock PM, the day before tryouts, I got an email from the principal saying that she was not allowed to attend tryouts, she wouldn't be allowed to try out at all because of some policy that was in place that said, any student that doesn't attend Woolwich or Morse or Bath Middle School was not allowed to try out. So I spoke with the principal, superintendent, and I spoke with you, Stephen, and I just, I, I couldn't really get a straight answer on why a tryout was not based on ability and skill, and when I spoke with the basketball A.D., she, she said that was the criteria when teams had a tryout and there were cuts that were gonna be made. The basketball team, I was under the assumption, well, actually I was told that there were eighteen girls trying out, twelve would make the team, and the way they choose the girls was based off of ability and knowledge of the game. I said, okay, that's fine, but for some reason Hazel wasn't even allowed to try out at all. So, and I said, we've lived here the whole time, and they said, well, she goes to, she goes to a private school, she's not allowed to, it's because of, it's a capacity issue, they said. And I said, well, capacity issue or not, why'd you let her play soccer the entire time? Again, I just got a, the policy answer, basically. So I used to coach Morse soccer years ago, three years, the varsity soccer team, I know a lot of coaches in the area, I know a lot of parents in the area, no one has ever heard of this policy, no kid that I have ever heard of has ever been told that they can't attend a tryout, in fact, I have a few, I talked to a few parents that actually have told us that there were kids from Chop Point, one of which was from Dresden, who's actually made a baseball team and played over kids that went to a school in the RSU One. So again, I've never heard of a policy that discriminates against a child based off of what school they go to. So basically, my question is, I mean, I've never heard of any other child being victim to this policy, I'm wondering why Hazel, why now? I'd just like to know the specific examples of other kids in this situation being denied a chance for a tryout to a sports team, because again, I haven't heard anything about that. Hazel did want to say a few words, if I could have her come up?
Hi. What happened was I was like really excited, I don't know, and my friends were excited about it, whatever. And then, like the day before, email, and it wasn't, I feel like it wouldn't be a big problem if I couldn't, like, if I didn't play soccer, because there, because I don't know, I made a lot of friends and whatever, and like made me almost feel like I wasn't, I don't know, I wasn't good enough or whatever, which, I mean, maybe I wasn't, but I kind of wanted to try out, test, see if I was, so, yeah, I think I just, never.
So again, I just might, I'm just hoping that maybe we can take a look at this policy, I mean, personally I'd like to see it just go away, because I don't think it makes any sense. In the policy it says sports by competitive, by nature are competitive, even though I was told it wasn't about a competition, and I don't think any kid should get preferential treatment over another kid, especially if they're in the same school district, regardless of where they go to school, this includes kids who are homeschooled, kids who go to any private schools, just because you go to a certain school and you're in the same district doesn't mean that you should get preferential treatment when it comes to playing sports. Again, just something to think about. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Hazel, in the back. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Kevin, thanks Hazel for stepping up and telling us how you feel, thank you.
I'm a student of Morse High School, I've lived about two years, I've lived about six weeks here, and I'm here as a part of Kevin and Hazel. I do have a form for private school students' access to public school code for a report, which is the mirror image to what the state or media publish it, which is wonderful. I understand from the number of policies, you can't be more restricted to the state level, but certainly the local level is broad, as broad you choose to be. And Kevin pointed out some important parts, which I'm already repeating, that we talk about capacity, but Sandy Rock explicitly says, a student enrolled in RSU schools will not be denied opportunity, which is made clear to the student who is enrolled in a private school. The criteria of selection, which is, shall be determined by the staff members, coaches, advisors, and supervisors responsible for the tryouts. Tryouts by nature are competitive, eligibility to try out is not guaranteed participation. What that means is anyone should be, has the right to try out. Those who are best suited, to give the team the best against the win, should be those who are in uniform, regardless of sport, regardless of gender. You know, wonderful presentation about unified, the word that you saw on every single screen was inclusive. We have students in our RSU who are homeschooled, choose different choices, but our athletic policy was not specifically inclusive, it was some of the young men who were putting what to do. Put yourselves in the shoes of a nine through eighth graders coming through, you know, fourteen who, yes, I can play soccer for this team, but mom, dad, explain why you can't play basketball? Not only not play, not give the opportunity to try out. If you try out and fail, that's fine, what does the adolescent athlete, I'm gonna work my butt off in the offseason, become better, and maybe next year, well, you know what, maybe basketball, whatever sport it is for me, maybe I'll do something else. But to eliminate the opportunity for these students to pursue something that they're interested in, I, I think there's a policy worth, worth revisiting. I think you let everyone in, you let everyone out, do you have open and fair tryouts or you don't? We see around the country, men play women's sports, women play men's sports, we saw today, Nancy signed her first BBS coaching coach, so it costs all these different ones. And it's important to note, I don't have specific numbers, you can probably ask Tom Bennet or Coach Vick, that the highest dropout for student athletes in sports occurs in middle school. Why is that? Do we take the opportunity, why, I don't know, do they wake up and realize, you know, I'm really not good at that, but I'm really gonna miss, I'm gonna pursue something else? If they choose to pursue something else, that's wonderful, that's very insightful for those student athletes. When we take away the opportunity to pursue a passion, that's a shame on us, it's a policy worth revisiting. Last but not least, I was very driven to be athletic director for Nate Priest, and less than one penny of every taxpayer dollar goes towards athletics. Maybe it makes sense to look at broadening that reach, so the kids that do get cut or are turned away have other opportunities at lower levels, right? The wide won't go so far, parks and rec will go so far, but when these gentlemen and women get seventh, eighth grade, you cut them off in each, you either make the school sponsor team, or you have no place else to go until you get to high school, then you have intermarials and so forth. It's a policy that's full of hair for sure, and I think there's some very easy fixes. To try out, the, the coach makes the decision, not the superintendent, not a principal, because of capacity, who has the skill and ability at this time to best represent at school and, and give a score. Last but not least, everyone remember Michael Jordan, right? When he was a sophomore, he was left behind, I think it's worked out very well for him. So just a policy that maybe you guys could revise, I appreciate your time, wish you all safe and happy next year.
Thank you, thanks. You know, I'm not sure the mic is, could you just check to see it's on? Just, just flick it with your...
So, my name is Lee Hines, and I'm a ninth grader at Morse High School.
So I'm a ninth grader at Morse High School, and I, and as well as my peers, are a little bit concerned, well, that's an understatement, about the situations at Morse High School at present. There have been numerous occasions over the past several years, even before I arrived at school this fall, where people who are gender non-conforming, or transgender, or anything that falls under LGBTQ are isolated from others, and bullied, and belittled, and we feel that there is a refusal to address it. Teachers turn their heads when they hear certain things, and they don't know how to properly address people who are struggling with being bullied because of this, and the longer that you refuse to address something, and the longer that you ignore an issue, the worse it gets. As I've seen, my peers are a little older than me, but I, I know, like, the situation's only gotten worse from when they were freshmen to when I'm a freshman, so I think that the school board seriously needs to take into account their education of LGBTQ people to their teachers, because they really don't know how to handle these situations, and so they seem too afraid to address it, and so they, they seem to turn a blind eye to what's actually going on in their classrooms, right in front of them. All of the situations I've had this year have taken place inside of a classroom, while a teacher was, if not present, right nearby. So we, we've noticed that this is, this is a problem that the school board needs to address, and that teachers need to be rewired into thinking, instead of, oh, that's a problem, I'll just ignore it, to, how can I help my kids achieve success in a stable learning environment where they don't have to feel isolated from others?
Hi, I want to just, first of all, thank you so much for being such a huge advocate at our school, and I just wanted to let you know that as a result of you and the Safe Club, Mr. Barney and I have actually reached out to the GAF and are doing two trainings for staff based on the issue, that has really come out of your work and the work from my dad to Shane in the Safe Club. So I know we have a lot more work to do, but I just wanted to know, I'm not sure if you knew about that, but you have been a huge voice and a huge advocate at our school as a result of that, and the work that you guys have done, we, we are, as one step, again, it's not fixing the problem, but it is a step that we, kind of a medium step that we are taking as a result of us hearing from our students.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grayson Burpee, I'm a senior at Morse High School, and I am a member of the SAFE team, as well as the Civil Rights Team at the school, and for the past few years, I've seen more and more underclassmen coming up to me, telling me that they don't feel safe at school, that they don't want to come to school, because they've had situations that either made them uncomfortable, or made them feel like they're in danger, that they no longer feel that they want to come to school. And, you know, being a senior, I feel like I should be able to do something, but then again... But, then again, who wants to talk to, like, I feel like, you know, freshmen don't really want to talk to me because I'm a scary senior. So, but I've seen, like, this increase, even for myself as a senior, like, of violence and harassment, and not even just for, like, LGBTQ plus folk, but also for, like, the girls at school, like, a major increase. And I think that really needs to be addressed. Obviously, something needs to be done that isn't being done. I know that the school is doing great, I'm talking about it, but I feel like something still isn't resonating within the students, within the student body, or even just the teachers as well. And I really think that we need to talk about it more.
I'm Vivian. I'm also a freshman at Morse. And during class, I overheard Lee talking about him being bullied, and I started to get really concerned. So, I went to a teacher to talk about it. And obviously, things are being done, but I feel like not enough is being done.
Hi. I'm Jen Harkins. I brought them all here today to talk to you. Because I think it's a big issue, and it's something that a lot of schools are facing right now. As a mother of three future Morse graduates, I have to say I'm horrified and outraged to learn of the bullying happening at Morse. For nearly two hours, I listened to a group of students talk about their experience, past and ongoing, ranging from disrespectful language to full-blown crimes. This has to stop, something needs to change. Everyone has the right to feel safe in their school. Everyone has the right to be treated equally among their peers. We're here to tell you that there needs to be kindness taught past grade school. We're here to advocate for empathy, something every human being needs to absorb and understand through seeing and doing. I realize most of you are sitting here thinking to yourself, "Oh, boy, here we go again. Look at us, we all survived it." That's right, we survived, but not all of us did. Some of us, to this day, still carry the emotional weight of our childhood bullies. And it affects those who we hold closest to us, leaving behind a residue of doubt, fear, and depression. It impacts our kids, our relationships, personal and working. We are adults. We're supposed to be the pro, we're supposed to progress and build up from where our parents left off. And yet, it seems we're the ones who are doing the most damage. I hear of teachers looking the other way, and speaking up to guidance counselors who say there's nothing they can do. I hear of sports team coaches posting anti-trans propaganda on their social media, maintaining a primeval set of beliefs that teachers teaches their athletes it's okay to be intolerant. And I hear of a principal unable to help the kids under his roof stay safe from verbal abuse, sexual harassment, and physical assault. The world is changing, and we can no longer keep ignoring it. So, we're here to ask for your help, and ask, what can we do to help you?
Hi, everyone. My name's Mike Gaetley. I'm one of the scout masters for the troop in Bath. And I'm here to echo a lot of the concerns we're hearing back here. I've been the trusted adult in that position for several years. And this is the first time issues have been to a point where I've been asked to come in and speak. I'll be honest, I have about a hundred things I'd rather be doing here tonight than addressing these things. This is not fun for me, this is not something I'm bringing up lightly. This is something I'm bringing up because I'm concerned about the youth in our community. As someone who has been accepted throughout all the communities I've, I've been in, growing up through here, it's really concerning to hear that people who are a little different from a lot of other people may not be experiencing the same level of acceptance in the classroom, or in sports, or outside of that. How many people are a little surprised to hear all this tonight? All right, you don't have to raise your hands or anything. But it's, it was definitely a little surprising when I, when I first heard this. But we need to not be surprised anymore. We need to, we need to think to help first. It's, it's time to enact additional levels of assistance for kids who have not just been bullied, but like Jenny had mentioned, there's, there are concerns about crimes, sexual harassment, other things going on here, which is just really not something that, that we, we need to be allowing in our, in our schools. We need to be meeting the needs of our youth. I'm here not because every kid has a trusted adult they can go home to or talk about. I'm not, I'm here because they don't have that in the schools all the time either, apparently. We have an incredible amount of opportunity in this community. What we are doing with the Unified Sports, when I was here twelve years ago, I would have never thought we'd be at this level of acceptance. We are an amazing community, an absolutely outstanding community that I'm very proud to be part of. And I really want to make sure that kids, youth, everybody in between, adults, we, we need to make sure that we're, we're inclusive of everybody in here. And I think we need to have an additional level of, not just bullying, but also improvements with, with what's happening with, with this specific situation. It's, it's at a point where the outreach, like Ms. Harkins was saying, needs to be not just for the students, but also for some of the other trusted adults in the community. Hearing it about sports persons and other people is deeply concerning for me. And, and I really am, am at a point where, where I felt the need to speak up. And I'm glad that there was a group of kids who persuaded me to finally do so. Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone.
Well, thanks for bringing, bringing this forward. You should not, in, at, at any minute, moment, doubt the sincerity and commitment of this board to provide and, and a safe learning environment for all the kids that are, that are being educated in the RSU. I mean, that, that's not, that, that shouldn't even be in question in your mind. I think you're, you're bringing forward some comments that, that perhaps, as, as you, you ask people to give a show of hands, that maybe some are hearing for the first time. And, and we will work with the, with the administration. I mean, there are very, there are very clear protocols and, and guidelines on, on how issues related to bullying and, and, I mean, you've used some pretty strong words in describing what, what... Well, what you've, what you've observed or have been told. And, and, I mean, we have some pretty clear protocols and guidelines on how to, on how to act down those situations, and how they should be reported and acted on. And, and we'll, we'll, we'll have some conversations. But don't, don't for a minute question the, the commitment of, of this board in this district to ensuring all students have a safe environment once they, once they enter our buildings. Okay. Yep.
I'll be brief. I sat on your side a few years ago for three years.
Could you, could you just give us your name?
Absolutely. M.J. Warren, thirty-eight Western Avenue. Like I said, I'll be brief. Policy, getting back to the Woolwich situation, or the tryout for any child. Policy was always written as a rule, understanding, a directive, meaning well. Our policy was always meant to mean well. And I think tonight, we've seen unified, and we've seen inclusive, and we've seen all those words. And we're getting away from that with the wiggle room in policy. I don't know what the benchmark is. What's the baseline for too many trying out? Is it twenty-six? Is it thirty? We all know there's a certain number of uniforms. We're not saying that. We're saying the ability to have every child in this district try out, participate, be part of something, win or lose, get chosen, get not. Denying a child an opportunity is not policy. We wrote it, we adopted it, and then we have wiggle room. We have to look at the wiggle room. Is the wiggle room good for the student? I don't understand why a child would be denied. Does it take longer to try out thirty, thirty-five, ten? And apparently Woolwich thinks they have, or Woolwich or Phippsburg thinks they have a lot of students trying out. Based on what? Hearseay? They sign up for forty, and ten show up? Policy was meant to be a good thing. And with the wiggle room, it doesn't, it's not a child positive outcome. So, I think, and I know you can't address it, but it's always meant well. And then we have discretion. But we have to explain the discretion, and I don't think we have too many kids. But anyway, I'm at a turn, I know you guys want to go home. But I just wanted to mention that, that we all know, I think all you know, and probably a lot of people know what policy does. But when you tweak it, and you alter it, and you make it fluid, you've got to kind of think about that. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks. Any, any other comments at this point? No? Okay, thanks for all of you who've taken the time to address the board. Thank you. Fourteen point oh, next meeting. Fourteen, we're, we're going to be meeting December sixteenth at the middle school at six o'clock. And as I indicated, we will be doing a workshop that, that evening after our regular, our regular board meeting. I do want to make, you know, point out to everyone on the, on the agenda, there's a, a long list of holiday concerts and other activities in, in all our schools. And hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to attend some of those. And that's all I have to say. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Need a second? Okay. We have a motion by Lou, second by Bill, long favor. Any oppose? No? Okay, thank you. Thanks. Thanks, everyone.